Good evening, welcome. I don't have a gong like the mayor does, but I will start by just saying, welcome everybody to the August 19th meeting of the Gaithersburg Planning Commission. We had this on our agenda, or excuse me, on the calendar as an extra meeting this year, you might recall, to address an application that was moving through the process and has subsequently been pulled. So, but in sort of a 11th hour change of plans, we do have some relevant issues to deal with tonight on our agenda, but it's not for the application on North Ritter Gavanna that folks have been tracking that that will, that's been pulled and will not be be on our agenda tonight. Also, alternate Commissioner Sharon Cantrell is joining us this evening. We'll be fully participating since we don't have a full, a full host of regular commissioners. So, welcome. Thank you for for being with us. First up tonight is the approval of our minutes from July 1st, 2020. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes July 1st, 2020. Is it ready to the record?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Wessel?
Aye.
Commissioner Hopkins? Oh, you're muted, Matt. You're frozen too. I'll come back to you. Commissioner Kaufman?
Aye.
Commissioner Cantrell?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye as well. Matt, if you can recycle, we'll assume for now that that's a 4-0-1 until you get back on. Whoever's taking the notes tonight, just put that on hold and we'll catch it up in a minute. That takes us then to a consent agenda tonight. There's one item for AFP 8569-2020, "Construction of a screened-in porch at 811 Pointer Ridge in the R90 Cluster Medium-Density Residential Zone", and this is an amendment to the final site plan. Are there any questions of staff on the consent agenda?
Nope.
Nope. Okay, seeing no questions, is there a motion, please, on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Brian, do you have any word from Matt, if he's able to be on or log on?
I have not heard from him yet. I haven't contacted him.
Okay, Commissioner Kaufman?
Aye.
Commissioner Cantrell?
Aye.
And I will vote aye as well. Let's show that as a 4-0-1 until we get Matt back online. All right, and that takes us into a discussion topic, and I guess who's leading that tonight?
I will be.
Okay, Rob is, all right.
So, good evening, Commissioners. As the Chair mentioned, it was sort of fortuitous that we had this extra meeting because as of this past Monday night, the Mayor and Council approved a resolution announcing a 12-month moratorium on subdivision text amendments and rezoning applications for Lake Forest Mall to allow staff to in-house complete a master plan amendment for Lake Forest Mall. Within your packets was a memo that was discussing what led us to this point. A year ago, we had proffered doing a special study area master plan such as was done for Old Town in the Kentlands Commercial District, and in fact Chairman Bauer was kind enough to act on our scoring committee with our RFPs. Given the way the world has changed with COVID, staff, economic development, city manager planning, we were all of the opinion, a quarter million dollar investment in a detailed special study area where a lot of the foundational elements we would question at this time probably wasn't necessarily the best course of action. But as explained in the memo, the master plan of record was from 2009, which ironically was done during the height of the Great Recession. So, in many ways, it was similar to now with much uncertainty. But I think the difference is as we begin to look at the 2009 element, while there's a lot of good valid, you know, best practices for planning in there and sort of aspirational things, we've learned a lot since 2009. So, we felt it was important that we begin...
Rob, you froze up, Rob.
Frozen or not?
It's not frozen on my screen.
Mine.
Again, so what was decided was, you know, it would be worth moving forward at this time with what we're referring to as a map designation, but it's truly a master plan amendment, but it's going to amend the map designation 35 from the 2009 land use element. So, the big difference for Planning Commission for the public is the end result of this is probably going to be very narrative-based. The goals of this are to include certain elements, or maybe more importantly, to lay out elements to be excluded from any development plan. So, don't expect to see road cross-sections or, you know, density by block ranges or discussions of height or massing diagrams. We're really not there. It's more laying out. So, whereas the special study area, we would have a discussion that, you know, hey, on Block A, it should be X number square feet of commercial for these uses and up to X number of units. This master plan amendment will be more along the lines of, you know, any retail should be focused in this sort of sector. Or if you're breaking out by housing types, you know, out of whatever housing shown, you know, for example, 60% should be multifamily, and then it's more of the aspirational things that come with that. A lot of the foundation for this effort and part of the reason for the moratorium is not only have we learned stuff through studies, but things are now a priority within the nation that weren't before. COVID has brought to light a number of things, not just the importance of, you know, public health issues, but questions of social equity, which really, you know, candidly were there and we never ignored, but they weren't really a focus. So, I think going forward, you know, Lake Forest Mall, whatever happens there, has to take in ideas along more of these social issues also. So, the six-month, the 12-month moratorium, essentially five to six months of that is just gobbled up in, you know, mandated legislative procedure. So, what we're really talking about is, you know, six to seven months to develop this. Council was very clear and, you know, we proffered it and supported it. A challenge right now is the lack of in-person meetings. So, it's how do we get meaningful public engagement? This evening, you know, Laura at the end is going to be giving a presentation to you guys for discussion, sort of what our thoughts were, who to target, you know, what platforms we should use, how we should go about this. And with many of the things that are being done now as we begin to look at this, a lot of it is really based upon, you know, a year ago, we completed and presented to council our data visioning analysis. So, we had contracted with Virginia Commonwealth University. We had done a lot of stuff that's dealt with projections. It looked at a lot of stuff at a very granular level on by down to the census tract level. And it had a lot of takeaways and a lot of the findings, even though it was been a year, and Kirk's going to be presenting, you know, the summary, the executive summary of the study itself. Many of the things have held true even through COVID, so it's really reinforced the validity of this study. So, that's going to be another document, not only in discussions, you know, with the public, but internally, we're going to be looking at things like that to help us craft, you know, what we should look for in a redevelop Lake Forest Mall. Just as I had mentioned to council, I want to impress upon the commission and also just because we're doing this map designation does not mean in the future we will not do a special study area, you know, if things change and, you know, stability comes and we can validate things and, you know, it's, you know, we can budget for it and, you know, developer hasn't come in in the meantime, this doesn't preclude it in many ways can act as the visionary foundation on which to build a special study area off of. So, again, this evening, really what we're looking for, I wanted to engage, you know, the commission early on. I mean, again, the resolution was only passed Monday. We're really not looking for public input at this point. It's really a discussion with you guys. So, the goals are threefold. Again, this will be an amendment to the land use element. It will go through the process. Timing-wise, you know, we are estimating, you know, the first three months or so to really be, you know, focused on our outreach activities. Month four or five, you know, essentially what we're sort of assuming is collating all that various data and having enough time to come before the Mayor and City Council and the Planning Commission will work session to present the findings and get some further guidance, sort of at the policy level, what the thoughts were. And then essentially giving us 30 days, you know, to sort of draft this standalone document, but it's really amending the map designation. And for, you know, Commissioner Cantrell, who hasn't really been involved with all of this, you know, under state law, we're required to advertise for 60 days, and then it goes to a joint public hearing. It'll come back to the commission and the role of the commission with this is they have to approve the master plan and then they recommend adoption by the legislative body, the council. So, if we come back with something and the Planning Commission doesn't approve it, it doesn't move forward. So, then we're going back to the well. So, another reason why earlier rather than later, we want to get all the parties engaged. So, with that, I think if Brian could go to page, packet page 54, I'm going to turn it over to Kirk Eby to actually walk you through the data visioning analysis.
Okay, now I've muted myself. Thank you, Rob, for that. So, I'm going to be presenting the executive summary of the, what we're calling the Cura Study, or which that is short for Center for Urban and Regional Analysis, which was the department at the Virginia Commonwealth University that did the study. Next slide, please. So, Gaithersburg basically has changed or transformed from a small town in the 20th century to more of a bedroom suburban community in the 21st century. Next slide, please. So, in the greater region, this slide basically is comparing the population change in the city versus the region, and you can see that we've had a stronger population growth than the county or the region. We also have a larger share of multifamily units as our dwelling unit type than the region or the county. And our median income has been lower than the county and the region and continues to be lower than the county and the region. You can actually see there was a decrease in the median income between 2010 and 2016 in the city as well as the county and a slight decrease in the region, but certainly a larger decrease in the city. Next slide, please. So, now I'm going to, we're now, the next group talks about the demographics of Gaithersburg. Next slide, please. So, for the age, you can see that the majority of people who live in the city of Gaithersburg are between the ages of 22 and 54, which is, you know, basically the working group age. But almost a fourth of the population is under the age of 18 and about 11% are over 65, which is, I can't remember how that compares to the region, but that is a pretty large number, and that is expected to continue growing as the baby boom generation continues to age. And the map that's included on the slide basically shows you that the population that's over 65 is fairly well distributed across the city, although I guess in the northern part, it's maybe a little less populated there. And the one that's the highest population, of course, that's where Asbury Methodist Village is located. Next slide, please. So, for race and ethnicity, Gaithersburg, of course, is a very diverse city, and the map there shows that even though the city overall is very diverse, there are areas of the city that are less diverse with the higher percentage of white, non-Hispanic population, primarily west of Interstate 270. Next slide, please. And so, for whether people are born in the United States or foreign-born, Gaithersburg actually has a large share of foreign-born persons. You can see that it's about almost 40% of the city's population with, which is split, which is almost half and half split between people who are naturalized and people who are not citizens. And you can see throughout the city that it's fairly well distributed. There are a couple of areas that where there's a little bit higher percentage of foreign-born, both east and west of 270. Next slide, please. And Gaithersburg, of course, is a very highly educated city. More than half of the people who live in Gaithersburg have at least a bachelor's degree or higher collegiate degree, and only 12% or 13% almost have less than a high school diploma. And again, you can see that it's fairly well distributed across the city, although west of 270 tends to have higher percentage of population with the bachelor's degrees or higher. Next slide, please. And for poverty, the city overall has a poverty rate that's slightly higher than the county and the region, I believe. And you can see from these maps that the, where the people in poverty live tend to be east of 270. There are, there's for families in poverty, there is a little bit of a pocket there west of 272, but primarily east of 270 is where that is occurring. Next slide, please. And the next group of slides talks about the housing in Gaithersburg. Next slide, please. And you can see from this table here that the, and the chart, that a little less than half of the units in the city are multifamily units. A little more, you know, a little bit more than a fourth is townhome, about 30%, and then about 21% are single-family detached. And the chart there sort of shows the variation in the percent that are detached. You can see there are a couple of tracks that have a lot of detached houses. And of course, the big point from this slide is that while multifamily make up a larger percentage of the total units, single-family detached and townhouses actually take up a larger area of land in the city. Next slide, please. And for renter occupied units, apartments, you can see that there's a pretty good mix of one bedrooms and two bedrooms, but a much smaller amount of studios and three bedrooms available. And Gaithersburg has a higher average household size for multifamily or for the renter occupied units than the county or DC metro. And the number of families in Gaithersburg also increased between 2000 and 2016, while the number of households living alone actually fell during that time period by 5%. And you can see from the map that there's where the the share of apartments that have more than, that have the studios and one bedrooms, is pretty well distributed across the city, but the where you have the two and three bedrooms being the majority of the rental units, kind of evenly split also across the city, kind of interestingly there. You can also see there are some areas where there are no multifamily rental units in the city, mostly west of 270. Next slide, please. And the city is basically 50-50 split between owner occupied and renter occupied. And if you look closely, you'll notice that the renter occupied is slightly higher than the number of multifamily units, which means that some of the single-family units are also being rented out rather than occupied by the owners. And you can see from the map that the the share of that the, the share of, I'm not trying to say this, the units that are rental units are primarily east of 270, although there are a couple of pockets there west of 270. Whereas the owner occupied units are primarily west of 270 with some of them being, with just a few being east of 270. So, that's kind of what that slide is showing. Next slide, please. And the largest average household sizes in Gaithersburg are primarily east of 270 and north of in the northern part of the city. And there's only that one area west of 270 that has an average household size larger than three. And again, if you were looking at the slides before, you'll notice that a lot of the areas with the higher how average household size correspond with the multifamily units, which is another interesting thing about Gaithersburg with its multifamily, its higher average family sizes and multifamily units. Next slide, please. And for the cost burden where household spend at least 30% of their income on housing costs, you can see for the renters, they're pretty well distributed across the entire city. Whereas with the owners, it's primarily east of 270 where the owners are spending more than 30% of their income on the housing costs. Next slide. So, the next group of slides talks about transportation items for Gaithersburg. This slide discusses the where people live and where they work. So, basically, for the people who live in Gaithersburg, about 88% of them actually work outside the city. But out of the ones who do work outside of the city, you know, only about, about half of them commute less than 10 miles. And a lot of them work in District 4, which is where Rockville and White Flint are, and also in Gaithersburg's area, in Montgomery Village, the Life Sciences Center, Germantown, those areas. And only about 11% actually commute all the way to DC. So, we are close to DC, but as you can see, a lot of people are not really commuting down there compared to the other areas that are nearer to the city. Next slide, please. And of course, the majority of people who do commute to work are driving alone, at least, and remember, this is before COVID-19 and everything we're seeing now. If you were to look at this today, you would probably see a very large increase in the work at home or work from home category. But it's probable that the next biggest category is probably drive alone still. It's probably, the other categories are probably still coming out in the same sort of divvy that they're shown on this slide. And you can see from the map that west of 270, there's a lot, a higher percentage of people that are driving alone compared to east of 270. Next slide, please. So, the next group of slides talks about Gaithersburg's commercial space. Next slide, please. So, office space has the most available vacant space by type, and retail space actually has the most buildings by type. And you can see on the chart there that Flex is probably the second largest area for vacant space. And again, this is based on 2017 kind of information. It'll be interesting to see if that has changed recently. Next slide, please. So, on average, city office spaces are about 51 years old, which is about a decade older than the average retail, industrial and multifamily structures. And the map there shows basically where the older office buildings are located. Most of them are east of 270. There are some west of 270 as well. And next slide, please. And so, the next group of slides is really just a big, kind of 5,000 mile or 5,000 foot overview of the, of what we just saw there in the other slides. Next slide, please. So, the big takeaways, west of 270, there's lower growth rates. It's a majority white, non-Hispanic population. Household incomes are higher. Educational attainment, so college degrees, et cetera, are higher. There's more people who are born in the US as opposed to foreign-born, and there's lower rates of poverty. Whereas east of Interstate 270, there's a higher growth rate, diverse mix of ethnic groups. Incomes tend to be lower. The educational attainment tends to be lower, so fewer people with college degrees, more foreign-born persons and higher rates of poverty. Next slide, please. And for housing, you know, west of 270, it's more ownership housing rather than rental. The average household size is smaller. There's more detached, single-family houses. And overall, the rent and ownership burden, so the households are spending 30% of their income or more on the housing part of their life is lower on that side of 270. Whereas east of 270, there's more rental units. There's a larger average household size, more townhouses, more multifamily units, and a higher burden for renters and owners in terms of housing costs. Next slide, please. And for transportation, west of 270, people are more likely to drive alone or work from home. And they're equally likely to work outside of the city, whereas east of 270, they're more likely to pay, take public transit or carpool. But like west of 270, they're equally likely to work outside of the city. Next slide, please. And for the commercial aspects of the city, west of 270, there's less commercial development. There's newer structures, newer commercial structures, so there's fewer of those older, fewer of the older buildings, lower rates of unemployment, and not a lot of development potential because a lot of it is, you know, single-family homes and things like that. Whereas east of 270, there's more commercial development already. There's more of those older commercial structures and more of them that are outdated. And there's higher rates of unemployment, and really that's kind of going to be the future focus of development in the city because that's where the redevelopment and development potential exists. And next slide, please. So, the next group of slides talks about the future projections for population, jobs, households, and the challenges that are associated with those. So, from this slide, you can see that the, the job growth is projected to to lag behind the population household growth through about 2035. And then from that year forward, you know, the job growth will probably begin to outpace household and population growth. It'll be interesting to see if that continues with all, all the changes that are happening now. And a lot of that kind of reflected the idea that you see a lot of redevelopment about 30 years out of lower density commercial uses being redeveloped into higher density commercial uses. And so, that would basically drive the job growth. And you may also have some areas that are more vacant or that are, that are more open space and not, not as utilized as economically efficiently as it could be perhaps. Next slide, please. So, the interesting thing from the Cura Study is that they showed a lot of strong growth areas for jobs in the professional science and technology and healthcare sectors, and a very slow job growth in the retail area. And it's interesting that, as Rob mentioned, that's basically held true even through COVID-19, that when you see the impact on jobs, a lot of the professional science, technology, and healthcare jobs have stuck around, either in-person or virtually, whereas retail jobs have really been impacted the most from the pandemic. And you can see that the COG forecast has just under 42% of job growth through 2042, whereas the Cura Study is actually showing a little bit stronger job growth of 43%. And it's interesting to note that the pipeline that's been approved for development can accommodate about half that projected job growth, and that's assuming it's completely built out. And of course, that may not happen as well, or there may be changes to it that, that would affect the amount that it could absorb, either increasing that or decreasing that amount. Next slide, please. And you can see that based on what's been approved in the pipeline development, there's really not enough there to meet those future projections for residential as well as the jobs that we talked about in the last slide. So, for the jobs, you can see that COG is forecasting 8,800 new households and about 2.67 people per household, whereas the Cura Study was estimating about 11,000 households. So, but a stronger demand, stronger growth in the households. And of course, that reflects, and also they're even showing a higher average household size, which means you would expect to have a higher population growth as well under the Cura estimates. And you can see from the pipeline itself that only about 5% of the pipeline is single-family units, whereas most of the pipeline is multifamily units. Next slide, please. So, the Gaithersburg's housing policy, the current policy, is really encouraging the 50% of residential development being single-family detached housing, although that's not very realistic given the amount of land that's left in the city to develop. And the cities, you know, the population that is coming to the city is most, is more likely to demand or to desire the multifamily housing. But just, you know, not all multifamily housing is created equal either. So, next slide, please. And you can see from this slide that there was an interesting outcome of the Cura Study is that there's, there's basically this, this need for a larger bedroom unit. So, rather than studios and one bedrooms, there's a really a need for two bedrooms and three bedrooms because a lot of the, the growth that is going to happen, if it continues to be foreign-born and they continue to be renters, it's likely that that will translate into families living in, more families living in multifamily. And of course, the two-bedroom and or three-bedroom are more conducive to families living in multifamily than a one-bedroom. So, that's, that's an interesting, another interesting outcome of the study. Next slide, please. And of course, the, the biggest challenge that was identified from the study is because Gaithersburg is a very built-out community with limited land available, the areas where there is potential for redevelopment, you're really kind of looking at, you know, how would you be able to accommodate the demand for jobs and the demand for housing at, you know, in the same space? And while you can do some of that through mixed use, the reality is you're not going to be able to do all of it. So, it's really something that, you know, you kind of are going to have to make a decision about, or the city's going to have to make a decision about, does it want to be more of a jobs-focused city for the pipe, for the future development, or should it be more of a residential focus? And I'm not sure that, I don't think that's actually been decided. I think that's something that the council is still... And I'm not sure that, I don't think that's actually been decided. I think that's something that the council is still going to be looking at as, you know, in, in the future. But it was interesting that the study identified this as kind of the, one of the, the big challenges going forward. And I think that is the end of the presentation, so I will turn it back over to Rob for any final thoughts and to transition to the next part of the presentation.
Thank you, Kirk. So for the commission, we wanted to present that to you so you, you get a sense of really what's going through our minds as we look. We know the east side is the future of growth. And while we are looking at it at the citywide scale with stuff, Lake Forest Mall is the first linchpin. So we really feel that whatever comes into Lake Forest should really be addressing a lot of these issues that we saw throughout this study. And I think, you know, it's important for us to sort of keep that in mind about what is going on. You know, for example, as I said, certain things COVID's brought to light. So while the Cura study was talking about based upon families in need for larger units, what we've seen now immediately in the era of remote working and everything else, the demand even for one bedrooms and dens because people need more space. You know, that period of time where everybody was touting, hey, everybody can live in six hundred square feet, they're beginning to say no. Additional things that have come out of that is demands for multifamily need us to reconsider certain other options that has been further reinforced by COVID, such as the need for usable open space. You know, going forward, you know, over landscaped small pocket parks aren't going to serve the needs. And when you look at something like Lake Forest Mall that we're talking with MXD where the requirement's only thirty percent green space, this is where that master plan can come in, that we can establish elements that go, no, we need more than that. Even with the commercial, with the discussions of retail, you know, again, the pipeline, as Kirk pointed out, you know, doesn't even serve half. And I bet a lot of those jobs, going back to old sketch plans, are, are retail based. So, you know, it may be time to begin rethinking that. And, you know, when we think about mixed use, it maybe shouldn't be the older model of retail with a little bit of office and residential. You know, how can we bring in civic uses? How can we utilize things like the integrated light manufacturing? How, how can we tap into our stronger markets? You know, the, the limitations, you know, we have to, we're going to be seeking some policy guidance from council. But again, this, this is really why we wanted to present this to you. And, you know, in a separate email, I'd sent you the full study to go through. And I, and I do think it is valuable really doing the deeper dive because if you look at stuff just at the citywide level, it, it doesn't necessarily give you the real accurate picture of what's going on. So again, as we move forward with this effort, a lot of those findings in there, a lot of the understanding of how the east side is functioning and things like that, we want to take into consideration in whatever we do with this master plan. So the first part of any master plan, you know, APA always says, you know, the best, best practices is engagement. So again, as you sort of mentioned, this is a challenging time where, you know, we're looking at many screens. So I'm going to turn it over to Laura. If IT could pull up the next page after the presentation. We've been talking about some different strategies about how we can rapidly begin approaching public outreach. So again, going to turn it over to Laura, and when she's completed, this is the discussion part. You know, we're happy to answer any questions or talk about anything the commission wishes. So go ahead and take it away, Laura.
Thanks, Rob. So this outline was included in your packets, and it briefly describes staff's overall outreach strategy. And this is just based on some preliminary internal discussions that we've had, so we don't have a lot of detail yet. But we are looking for any feedback you may have at this point. So there's five general topics that we came up with that we'd like public input on. Housing, transportation, social equity, equity, green space, and the overall development focus. So some of these topics like housing and transportation stem from the Cura study that Kirk presented. And then things like social equity and green space, we wanted to add because, as Rob has mentioned, they've really come more into focus due to the pandemic and recent events. So with housing, we're interested in what the recent trends are, what are people looking for in their housing units now? Transportation, what are the needs regarding a potential new transit center onsite? What is the preferred circulation pattern and mode of transportation? Social equity, really making sure that any future development can help meet the needs of diverse populations. And then what types of green spaces people are looking for? And lastly, the overall focus of development. So should it attract more large scale destination type commercial or employment users? Or should it be more of a neighborhood scale, smaller development? And then also whether or not the site, whether or not the site should include space for a future school? And what are the considerations surrounding that? So to get answers to some of these things, staff would like to have virtual discussions or conference calls similar to a focus group type discussion with different stakeholders. You see listed here, you know, various county and transportation agencies, the county planning folks, MCPS, the current Lake Forest property owner, as well as the surrounding property owners, service providers, and developers. And then for the general public, we'd like to have both the virtual and then, if possible, you know, if we can do it safely, an in-person meeting, just to try to reach as many interested people as possible. And these would be more of an open dialogue. You know, we don't really have like a plan to present to them. We could present background information and then ask questions and sort of guide the discussion and then also give any attendees the opportunity to ask questions, staff. Could you go to the next page, please? And then we'd also like to do surveys, one online, which would be open to anyone that would like to complete it. And then also one mailed out to the surrounding residents and owners to get their feedback. And then we would have information up on a city projects page, status updates, as well as background information. And then one of the things we were just discussing today is potentially working with PIO to maybe do some short video clips to sort of replace that lack of person to person interaction that we can have right now to help explain certain things like just the history of Lake Forest Mall or maybe just information on the master plan amendment process. Because we think the videos would be more engaging than just providing material for folks to read. And then for advertising, you know, we would use our social media platforms to really promote this effort. And then we also thought maybe there's a possibility of putting up signs or posters surrounding the, the property for further advertising. So that's all we have for you this evening. And then we're, as Rob said, open for any questions or feedback that you have.
Go, Matt. You're commuted, though.
So Laura, I think the only thing I would add to your initial first page is just that after public, potential public school sites is an and/or community hub. So I think what Rob was kind of hinting at, if there's a way to sort of add some brief language to say, you know, should they be combined, shared space, and should there be more than one? It's a fairly large site. So I think all those questions are kind of open to what scale we end up deciding on and some other things. But I also want us to sort of expli, you know, explore combining the community hub idea with the public space and a school site rather than segregating a school site off to a corner somewhere, putting a fence around it and walking away. Or, you know, what we've done in the past really is what I'm kind of afraid of. So.
Okay.
But that, that's my only suggestion. It's a great list. I'm excited to see.
Thank you.
Just add for any of my commissioners who haven't read the full report, the devil's in the details there. The charts are great. You know, Rob knows I love the charts and the pretty pictures. But I, I do find the real, you know, pearls of wisdom down the deep parts of the text. So if you read it all, you'll, you'll get something from it.
Lloyd, were you going to jump in or?
Yeah. Point of clarification first, and that is that in two thousand nine, we never got the vote to rezone Lake Forest. It's still a C two. Is that correct? And therefore, it's not MXD at all?
Um, you are correct, Commissioner Kaufman. So when we did the master plan in two thousand nine, remember there were like forty-five mapped designations. The way Maryland state law is set up is in order to comp rezone, you have to do the entire document. So we wouldn't have been able just to comprehensively rezone just Lake Forest Mall. Back in two thousand nine, the legislative, the, the council body at that time did not wish to pursue a comprehensive rezoning. We had broached the topic at that point. But again, that's a legislative action that, that only they can take. And just for those who haven't gone through this, because I don't think we've done a comp rezoning since the nineties, it is subject to a separate public hearing process. So one of the things to take away from this is by doing this as a standalone map, master plan amendment, the opportunity at the end of it will be in council's hands, should they so choose to comp rezone the mall at the end of this. They may choose not to do it and wait till a development application and rezoning application comes in because it's very likely, you know, something may come in phase. So they may wish to do that as opposed to, you know, doing that. I, I, again, that's, that's twelve months off, but I just want to be upfront. You know, it is in the back of our mind that by doing this as a standalone master plan amendment, you know, a comp rezoning very much could potentially be on the table.
And additionally, Laura, I would suggest on the outreach strategy that you may want to incorporate the Montgomery County as well as Gathersburg Police.
Okay, yeah.
And that was, that's my close, that's my suggestion.
No, that's, that's something we hadn't thought of. So thank you.
Let me rewind a bit to the beginning of this when, Rob, you were really giving a history of what, what had been going on on this site over the past couple of years. And, and maybe this is something we can add to whatever the, the materials are that are going to end up getting pushed out to the public for their comment. But so imagine that we were going to go forward with the consultant that was selected through the RFP process. The product from all of that work would have been something very visual, very graphic, probably very, you know, kind of reach for the sky, aspirational images and things that would look, you know, look like something, whatever it is. But, but, you know, it would have sort of a physical environment kind of quality to it. I'm getting the sense that coming out of this, we're really going to have more of a narrative that's going to be a little bit more, you know, it'll be data driven, it'll be correct, it'll be, you know, it'll be those things. But it'll be a narrative that may not be as accessible to everybody as, as it is to folks who are, who are focusing on things like land use documents and all that. Do we have any capacity at all in, in this, this one year, nine month process to, to capture some kind of visioning for the site that does have, you know, a, a design quality to it?
Um, I, I believe there, there's always opportunities. So what the chair was alluding to, the RFP for the special study area, the deliverable was three actual plans at the block level that showed variation within the block that could be actually used as a sketch plan. This is not proposing that, but that does not mean, especially with it being a, a standalone document, that it, you know, will look like the map designation that was included in your packet where it's just, you know, the eight parcels and then a bunch of narrative. Obviously, we'd like to explore ways to bring some graphic elements, but we are going to be conscious of the fact that we're, we're not going to talk about the design. But if there's things that come out that there's, you know, let, let's say, for example, and if anybody's watching at home, whatever, don't, don't take this as this is what we're doing. But if there is a transit center and, you know, there is a model transit center that talks about this, you know, we can do those things. If there are discussions about certain multifamily or usable park typologies, you know, we can include those graphics to give a particular sense. If we're talking, I mean, another takeaway that we've all seen is, especially with street level pedestrian experience and commercial stuff, we're going to need wider sidewalks now, you know, if, you know, even though, you know, somebody, someday we all may be able to eat inside a restaurant. The world has changed. I think outdoor seating is becoming something, curbside pickup is becoming a fact of life. Electric charging vehicles are becoming a fact of life. So these are elements that I think, you know, were never really even thought of in two thousand nine, but should potentially be included in a discussion about what we expect to see coming out of Lake Forest Mall. And I think that lends itself to graphics, even if it's just at the best practices level.
Okay.
And, and, sorry, John, were you, were you finished?
Go ahead.
Oh, I was gonna say, and I might split that hair too, John, and just say that, you know, in addition to the data set that, you know, that VCU put together for us, a really great site grading, which I think Rob hinted at, and really great site analysis. So where, where are pedestrians coming from? Where are cars coming from? And what's the throughput? You know, where is, where is their surrounding development potential on the neighboring properties? And where is it done for the foreseeable future? And what kind of, you know, development are they? You know, how, how far do the nearest transit center, nearest highway, the nearest major retail centers, you know, are we? And then a grading of that site to say, you know, if there were gravity to this site, you know, where would gravity pull, you know, multifamily product? Where would gravity pull single family product? Where would gravity pull? Not in terms of, you know, black and white, but in terms of most likely. That kind of site grading, I think, is a really valuable tool.
No, I, I agree. And, and it's an enormous site, and it's been, you know, forty, fifty years internally focused. It hasn't really been much more than a big sponge to suck in people to come shop there. It hasn't had to interact at the edges or, or work at the edges the way a new development would. And that's, that's a very critical diagram you're discussing. I think that's really important. And, and it's interesting because what, what I'm afraid of, and I mean, I guess not afraid is, that's probably not the right way to say it. But we do need to get a lot of outreach going and, and figure out ways of really tapping everybody's ideas and everybody's thoughts about the site. What I'm, but, but it partly, it has to be to open up the vision of what it could be, not just, here's what you know, and it was known for the past, you know, forever. What would you like to see maybe there and not have some of those inspirational things to explain that? There's a lot of possibilities there. It doesn't have to be the conventional residential development or conventional retail development or, or a mix of those two items. It could be a lot of different things that could happen there because it's a, it's a very large site. And I, I don't know what that tool is, but I, I get the sense there needs to be something upfront to kind of spark that discussion with, with the public to, to give you feedback and not just throw open a blank questionnaire with, well, what would you like to have there? And then you get back fifty responses that are a bookstore, you know.
Staff totally agrees because that's our concern too, because we don't want to have, and I want an Apple store. And I, you know, again, this is sort of the balance between the Cura study because we'd sort of like the visionary aspirational aspects, but we wanted to sort of dovetail with the quantitative analysis and the projections that we know. So a, again, you know, we don't think, you know, I personally don't think it should be a mall. So if somebody comes in and go, I want a bunch of big boxes, you know, potentially, you, you, you know, again, if that doesn't jive with, you know, other things, or, you know, if they just go, I want to see of, you know, big, single family detached homes, when we know that's really not going to meet our long term needs. So this is where it's, it's sort of doing these discussions with different groups. We want to take in a bunch of stuff. But as I mentioned, you know, with the taking in, this is why we want to afford enough time in the timeline to do a joint work session where we can present all the various, you know, takeaways that we've gotten and bring in the various studies again and, and sort of get guidance from the commission and, and the council before we really begin writing going, which direction do you want to go?
So do you think we have the capacity to, when we do, when we do engage stakeholders, pick a group, you know, maybe it's the Montgomery Village Foundation or it's Montgomery County Transportation, whatever it is, to facilitate that? Is that what you have in mind? Or is it more of a question and answer kind of?
So, so this is, again, what we've had internally, and, you know, we'd sort of like to broach with the commission. There's numerous platforms. As Commissioner Hopkins said the other night, he had six different platforms up on his computer, so he had to find the right one for the meeting. You know, what works best for the goal? You know, some of these, we don't want to make them so large that they become unwieldy because I think we've all participated in a virtual meeting that way. So this is why we were thinking about if we break them into smaller groups. And some of them may candidly be able to be accomplished just through conference calls. And that could just be, you know, working with county agencies. So it's really looking at, you know, what's going to work best. And this is, again, you guys are all professionals. You, you've been dealing with, with, you know, various platforms. What, what would work best? Again, one of Laura's goals early on is to get with our community relations division to open up to the faith based and the MPO thing to sort of address some of these social equity. I don't think that's one that can really be facilitated through a conference call. But, but, you know, is, you know, with Zoom, some of the limitations, you know, is that the right one? Or is it go to meeting? Or, you, you, you know, it's along those lines. Certain ones, certain platforms, I think, I believe, you know, allow us to record the thing. So this is another thing we've been discussing. Certain of these focus groups, you know, is it worth recording and posting to the project page? Where other ones, you know, if you're dealing with S H A candidly, they're not going to want to be recorded. So that's one, you know, it may be a conference call and we do minutes, and the minutes get reviewed and we post the minutes for the takeaways. Because as you know, most government agencies don't want to go onto camera and commit to anything. So, you know, it, it's looking at who we're targeting at that point.
Okay.
And I think I would just, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Go ahead, Laura.
I would just add to that. With the survey, we've contracted with a vendor that can do more interesting things with the survey, more visuals and more graphics to try to communicate certain concepts. And I think that can help some type of, you know, we can present them images of different park spaces or images of different types of development to sort of get their ideas, what their preferences would be. So I think that's one way to sort of spark ideas and discussion on what could happen on the site.
Great.
So Laura, I think the thing that John might, might need is that scaled representative imagery. So it's something about the same size, and then we can find ten examples. It's an APA ULI kind of, you know, laundry list of projects that are about the same size, whatever, whatever it is, eighty-five acres or whatever it is. And they've been developed in ten different ways. And then you can visually see what that density was. And we want to obviously all pick successful examples.
Okay. Okay.
So Phil, you were trying to jump in there and?
I think I was, and I, I think this is Matt, what you were, what you were driving towards a little earlier, but the more I listened and thought about it, the more it deserves expanding on is that I almost feel like this needs to start frankly, ignoring the Lake Forest site and looking at everything within a mile or, or two miles. You know, if you look out to 355, if you look all the way to Old Town, if you look north, if you look east, and looking at redevelopment and potential in that, in that realm. Because Lake Forest is sort of a blank slate and whatever, whatever moves we make, whatever size pebble we drop into the pond is really frankly, as much about leveraging and guiding redevelopment and improving the area around it almost more so than it is about what we put on the site. Obviously, the site has to work and function, but it's, it's a bigger, much bigger.
I, I concur with Commissioner Wessel, and this was a discussion with council. And we were very clear, both economic development and planning, that there are a lot of areas that need looking, but it's really going to be in response to Lake Forest Mall. And given the constraints of the moratorium, um, we really don't, uh, uh, again, the, the real, the real issue that came up with council is it, it's the timing of redevelopment. So right now with Lake Forest Mall, three are in bankruptcy and closed. One anchor, Macy's, is the only one open and the core is obviously failing. Something's going to happen on that site within three years. The surrounding areas, we can't necessarily say that. So I, I get you, we want to acknowledge it, but I want to be upfront that we're not going to be engaging in scope creep and spending a lot of time looking at the potential around the areas.
No, and I think that's totally fair. And I'm not, wasn't in any means suggesting that we do a, uh, a plan for the whole, you know, 10 square miles or whatever, whatever it is, but I think spending a little bit of time on, on analysis and frankly, I think a lot of the analysis is probably done already between the 355 corridor study, whatever was in the, the Cura study, just spending a little bit of time identifying the key drivers from those studies and the key opportunities from those studies that we want to at least have around the periphery of our discussion on Lake Forest, I think is what, what it is.
Yeah. Sharon, you trying to jump, jump in?
Yeah. Um, so I heard somewhere, I guess when a year ago, we talked about this, it's a hub zone and it's an enterprise zone, both. Um, is that correct, Rob?
It's an opportunity zone and it's an enterprise zone. So another reason why we felt it was important to get out in front with this because even if it's not W R S, if there's some, as unknown player who comes in, um, even during COVID, there's incentives to take advantage of this site. So again, why we felt it was important to get out in front and not just leave it to the 2009 map designation.
I guess that, that leads to the next question. So do you, are there things you have to do within that designation to keep it? Just, does anything that we do change that or is, does it enhance it or does that matter?
No, it's there, but should there be redevelopment and obviously from the census tract level, you know, if there's substantive demographic changes, both economic and everything else, you know, eventually it may lose its enterprise zone designation. Cause that, I think Kirk can probably jump in on some of this because he's done a lot of work, um, with our other departments to get the enterprise. It's really based upon demographics and how median income, things like that, that, that really established the enterprise zone designation. I, I mean, candidly, the one we have now isn't the same one we started with. There have been areas, um, the enterprise zone expanded, but there were other areas that were previously enterprise zone that are no longer enterprise zone. Right. So, yeah, the opportunities, I'm sorry, Kirk, I'll let you go in one second. Opportunity zone, that's a federal program. Who knows how long that will last in an election year? You know, I, I don't really know with that, but it is both. You are correct in that. So go ahead, Kirk.
Right. So Rob, with the enterprise zone, I believe that is sort of driven by the state of commercial, um, development in an area. And that's sort of, and the city applied for that. And as you mentioned, the, the new enterprise zone, the current one is not the same boundary as the initial one. The opportunity zones, um, that are, uh, from the federal government, those are actually driven by, uh, economic factors for the population. So the, the interesting thing about Lake Forest is that that census tract is an opportunity zone. And it's completely driven by the fact that there's all these apartments in the county that have a lot of low-income persons living there. And that's really what, 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 um, led to that. So it's not because of Lake Forest, because obviously there's no population in Lake Forest, uh, today.
Spider Mill Apartments is right there, which is H O C property.
Right. Oh, I didn't know H O C owned that. That's interesting. Yeah. There's a lot of, of, uh, renter and multifamily across the street there on Lake, on Lost Night.
Quick. So the Holiday Inn is across the street, um, the hotel. Are these looked at together in some way or because?
No, that is outside. We're, we're really limiting it. This is what I mentioned and why we had the discussion. We're really limiting it to the eight parcels that make the mall. There had been a request from Guardian who owns four properties along Lake Forest Boulevard. There's other things, uh, again, we just begin to get scope creep and it's really, again, as I mentioned, the timing of when we think redevelopment is going to occur. As we impressed upon council, we're going to review all of these things. It, it's going to happen. Um, but, but right now, sort of if you, if you had in a sense triage something, the eight parcels that make up Lake Forest Mall are the most critical to be addressed.
Right. And to, to Commissioner Wessel's point, I think it is okay to look past the Lake Forest boundary for things that are already there that maybe, like for example, there's a library, you know, right across the street there. So if you were looking at, oh, what things should happen at Lake Forest Mall, maybe a library wouldn't be one of those because there's one so nearby. So I think it does make sense to look beyond to see what's there, sort of as an inventory. Um, I think, uh, Commissioner Wessel was also sort of alluding to the fact that, you know, whatever happens here should really set the standard for everything that's going to come after it. So I think that's another important, uh, aspect of, of this, this map designation.
And, and I think when you start getting into specific uses, when we start having park conversations and, and, and other things, I think there are going to likely be some things where we look at it and say, we should absolutely put that use here because of the size of the lot, that we are not going to get it on any other parcel in the area. Likewise, there are going to be some things where we say, there are 15 other opportunities in the next 20 years for this use to develop on another parcel. Let's not put it here. And so that's sort of what I'm getting at. Single family housing comes up. I mean, you're a stone's throw from the historic district, which is nothing but single family housing. So maybe that says something about how much single family housing, if any, we need on the site, you know? That's the level of analysis I'm talking about.
I, I think that's very reasonable and I think it would be needed to help explain again, sort of the background of what's going on in the world. Yeah, I think that could be very useful.
So I might be stating the obvious, but, um, if we're, if we're, um, changing the map on this, would it be fair to say that, um, the whole mall would be taken down? I mean, there's no adaptive reuse opportunities.
So here's the thing, we're going to go under the assumption that essentially at the end of the day, you know, and Frank and I had gone before this body and council explaining master plans and requirements. At the end of the day, the requirement is you have to do a zoning recommendation and a land use recommendation. We believe the existing from 2009 zoning recommendation rezoned to M X D and adopt a commercial office residential land use are still appropriate. It's now the devil's in the details, but, um, just because you do a master plan, it does not force anything to change. It is a mall, they can continue even with a master plan, even if comprehensively rezoned, as long as they don't re-subdivide, they can continue operating as a mall in perpetuity. Much of the commission may remember, we had this discussion as related to the Saul property over at Kentland Square. Um, about, you know, how they could, you know, continue to do development in strip mall when we had the Kentlands Commercial District Master Plan. You know, a master plan does not supersede vested site plan rights. So, you know, we're going to do this effort. Uh, again, we're hedging our bets. The reality is, again, with the bankruptcies and everything else, that we don't see where the money's going to be made trying to keep this alive as a mall. And especially we believe by doing this master plan amendment, it will tangentially, you know, increase the value of somebody looking at this because we're opening up opportunities to do more than just have a big box anchor. You know, or, or a class C mall.
Rob, I mean, listen, around the country, there are examples of malls that have turned themselves inside out where the basic footprint and distribution of, of built versus parking versus whatever, it kind of keeps some of the footprint intact, but it's a fundamental shift in the way the whole thing is, is, is done. That's not off the table necessarily. I mean, Montgomery Mall is just announced or Westfield, excuse me. You know, they've announced a new plan to redevelop one end of it, right? And they're going to, the Sears end, and it's, it's not going to look like anything like a conventional mall, but it leaves some of it intact. So there's no reason to think that something like that couldn't emerge, maybe in the interim before a wholesale redevelopment.
My sense is this will, will probably be redeveloped in phases. So it's very likely to see something. So again, another reason why, um, at this stage, given the way the world is, we don't want to do a design plan. Because it may not be able to accurately reflect, but this does afford us what I was talking about with the narrative. We can do a discussion about phasing that if it is, that, you know, any grid road network, you know, is to be stubbed out to continue that, you know, we're not to have dead ends, you know, at, at, at parcel lines or things like that. We can talk about ways to say that phasing has to be able to facilitate future phases and be integrated as, at the end of the day, one huge development as opposed to five separate piecemeal. Hence, part of the reason why we wanted to do this under a moratorium, because we didn't want somebody, you know, potentially to go, you know what? I'm just going to go ahead and rezone mine under the current master plan now. And they put something on the table and then we're sort of stuck with it and working around that.
And let me ask you one other quick thing. Um, on the slide about, um, the, the strong job growth areas, it's a very general outline. Do we have more granular, uh, more granular list or, or a deeper list where, where, you know, maybe not the top five, but there's nothing wrong with promoting the number?
I believe, I, I believe actually in the report, it does get a little bit more granular. And again, this is where we want to, um, explore some things. So this, this could be another targeted focus group. Uh, again, when we meet with people, we're not really looking to say, hey, what would you want to do on Lake Forest Mall? If we're meeting like, say with a, a, a multifamily builder, we are more interested in what, how have you seen multifamily in this region changing? You know, is it, you know, is four-story stick construction, you, you know, um, really the way to go? Are you finding larger units? What are you finding when you do a successful project? What are the ancillary things that have to come with that that make it successful that should be integrated? So this is where I was saying it, it's the subtle dance. We don't want to necessarily get into, you know, how many townhomes would you put on Lake Forest Mall as opposed to, you know, what, what are, what are you responding to? You know, I think Commissioner Hopkins, we may want to have a discussion based upon his world outside of the planning commission, just because he's working up and down the eastern seaboard, you know, to sort of get his sense of, of how that market, um, how that development market is changing. And I think the same's going to be true, um, for these other sectors, you know? How well, you know, are biotechs solely forever going to want to be separate and by themselves? Or are they willing potentially to be somewhat integrated with other uses? So it's, it's looking at these, what are the needs, um, in order, again, to create a holistic community?
The, the other, the other part to that, I mean, I, I, I agree with you. I think, I think there's, there's tons of ways to ask the question. I think what I'm, I'm sort of reacting to is there are lower tech job growth areas that are out there that are happening. They may not be nearly as hot as some of the ones you've listed, but they're still viable and there's still things we may want to think about. Promoting is another way to diversify. Cause like I said, if you, if you put it all into biotechnology and there's a, there's a, there's a downturn in that industry, then, then you're leaving some of the stuff behind. So just to the extent that we have, when we go out to the public, something that really broadens the sense of what could be there as a, as an employment center, as an employment engine. And the, the part of the language too leaves out entertainment. And, and I don't know what that means, but there's anything from, um, you know, a small scale laser or something to a large scale, you know, minor league ballpark. And there's all kinds of stuff that could happen in that realm that may be an appropriate thing to start looking for.
No, I, I agree. And as the, as the commission's aware, a number of years ago, you know, we did that comprehensive text amendment to sort of clean up and simplify and allow, you know, quote unquote, entertainment experiential uses. So this is another thing that's come to light since the 2009 plan. Again, I really want to get away from, you know, everything's either re, you know, a binary mixed use of retail and residential. And then if that even gets even more binary where, you know, all we want is townhomes and all we want is destination retail, when there's enough stuff saying that's really not the way the world should go. So I totally agree. I, I want to explore all these various options because I think as we're all aware, the, the more diversity we have in housing stock, in economic demographics, in non-residential uses, the more resilient and sustainable this community will be over the long term.
Sure. Lloyd, please jump in.
Yeah, I, Rob, I just want to remind you, perhaps maybe five or seven years ago, there was an infrastructure study done of the exit coming off of the, uh, 270. And there was a complex road proposal that was being put forth. It may have been during a study, it may have been during a, uh, Chautauqua, I, I don't recall exactly, but you may want to dust off some of that and take a, take a look at that and see how that perhaps would integrate uh, the infrastructure, uh, with the development of that particular property, because it was geared towards the development of the Lake Forest Mall area.
Yeah, I, I think we're, again, this is why, you know, I was happy that the commission had agreed to this additional meeting because this is really with the, with the resolution only being signed Monday, it's good to get out in front and start having ideas because again, technically we are on the clock, so we want to have our, our ducks in a row. Um, I think while we've been discussing one question, I want to put forward to the commission. So during these various things, obviously we know the requirements of open meetings, but would any commissioners be interested if we do these focus groups sitting in? Obviously, we couldn't have more than two commissioners, um, at one of these focus group things. Because then, you know, once you get to three, then you got to advertise and open up the public comment, all of that stuff. But, but as we move forward with this process, as opposed to waiting, you know, if there is interest, you know, feel free to reach out to any of the three of us. And as we finalize stuff, you, you know, we can sort of do a more formalized, here's our game plan in time. So obviously we, we welcome your input and I was not kidding, I think, um, we would very much like to have a conversation with Commissioner Hopkins, just to pick his brain, not so much on the design aspect, but, but what he's seeing to help us that if, you know, if we know based upon the study and what's going on, there's probably going to be, not definitively, you know, we haven't made any suppositions, but just off the top of my head going, there's probably going to be a large multifamily component. You, you know, what, what is the best sort of multifamily, you know, given what's occurred in the near term and, and going forward that from his perspective, we should expect to see on here. So we could sort of talk about those things.
Well, and Rob, your point about open meetings, and, and I agree with, I think, I think Mac has brought a ton of perspective residential, but I, but I would. I was getting neck up. If you, um, if you're doing a, a focus group or you're getting a, a group together, stakeholders together to, to discuss this, there's no reason we couldn't observe it. We wouldn't necessarily participate, but it wouldn't, we wouldn't be actively participating in that group. And so therefore wouldn't be convened as a meeting if there was any kind of an open meetings issue. We could certainly observe it though, or watch.
We would just like, obviously if something comes up, we'd, we'd like to have this discussion with Frank just to make sure. And again, really what I'm thinking of is when we get to some of these other state and county agencies, uh, again, that, you know, may not necessarily want to have a conversation, you know, with, you know, 40 other residents looking at again. We want to be able to have an open and candid conversation. But, but again, you know, you know, the land use article is pretty clear. You guys have a big role with master plans and obviously you guys are interested in this. So I just wanted to put forward the offer that if it's, you know, if you have a particular point of interest, uh, I, I believe it was Lloyd who brought up, you know, the police department, if we do set up that meeting, you know, would you be interested in sitting in and listening? And then because it would just be you or one another, you could actually participate with staff and ask questions and help probe things as opposed to being dispassionate, you know, observers.
Good idea. So outline for us how this is, how this is going to start getting some momentum. What, what do you see happening next?
So probably, you know, I, I think what, what's come out of this evening's been helpful. Um, I believe starting next week, we are probably going to have a much larger internal discussion, you know, engaging C M O, economic development, P I O, you know, finalizing some strategies. We've got to finalize, you know, survey questions, things along those lines that are going to go through multiple hands. We want to get the project page up and running. As Laura mentioned, you know, we have a contract for that survey engine that we use for the C D zone outreach. So it's getting that together. I would very much like to be able or, or, or commit to having some sort of project page up within the next two weeks. Um, I think certain things, you know, next week, um, if it's smaller things such as, you know, speaking with Montgomery Village Foundation and Montgomery Area Two Planning, you know, we can probably start having those phone calls, um, next week. One of the things, and, and it very much ties into Commissioner Wessel's statements. Remember the Montgomery Village master plan that was done like three years ago or whatever? They basically punted on all those properties across Lost Night from the mall and going, we have some ideas, but it's really going to be really in response to what happens at the mall. So to your point, this is why we want to sort of engage them going, all right, if we go this, what are you guys thinking? You, you know, so to get these high level things. So where we can do some of these that really maybe not warrant an audience, for lack of a better term, we want to get some of those started. But, but I think the real challenge is, is going to be the ones where it is, for lack of a term, with an audience, um, moving forward. So we want to make sure, you know, what are the questions we want to ask? How do we want to drive these things? You know, how do, what platform are we going to use? Are we going to record them? But we would like to have obviously something, some sort of rollout through P I O within two weeks to go. If nothing else, here's a project page and we move, you know, economic developments, Lake Forest project page materials over to that, plus with some additional stuff.
So this become a regular agenda item for us then to check in and?
This is one of the things we were discussing internally when Kirk, Laura and I were meeting. Going forward, you know, we're happy, you know, to provide, you know, memo briefings. I, I don't know if we necessarily need to come before you every month, but, but to keep you in the loop about what's going on. We think that, that's. we think that, that's, that, that, that is, that is more than fair, especially if we hit some keystone things. And again, this is why I wanted to do the offer that with some of these, you know, if, if, if a commission or commissioners wish to sit in and participate, you know, again, then from the commission, you know, they, they can sort of brief on what the findings. We're not doing anything in secret. So even if, again, if we meet with state and county agencies and through a conference call, we will be doing minutes and we will be posting minutes, so everybody knows what comes out of that. We just don't want to have something potentially devolve, like we're meeting with M C P S where residents start, want to start arguing with M C P S. That, that isn't beneficial to them.
Now, what I'm, what I'm getting at is, I, I'm going to assume that in the next few weeks, there'll be a calendar with a fairly, a little bit more detail about what's going to happen, you know, month by month, what the deadlines are, what the goals are for, for getting certain pieces of this pulled together. And I, I would assume that whether it's once a month or, or just by memo, that you'll want to update us on how that's going. You know, what, what's happened in the previous four weeks and whether it's hit the, hit the milestone that was on the schedule or whatever those different things are.
Just looking at the moratorium, as I mentioned, right now, best case scenario, all this engagement that we're talking about is going to be completed over the next four months.
Yeah.
On five, month five, you know, again, we, we want to reserve that for potential work sessions with your body and, and the council. And we, we figure, because this is primarily narrative, we, we, once we have everything, because we'll continue working regardless, we can probably get this written and formatted within a month, you know, in time for, for the sixty-day advertised, required advertising period. So again, this is, you know, sort of as, as Laura mentioned, you know, if the world changes, we'd love to do in person. But again, we're sort of sitting there going, you know, how many people are really going to come out on a February night? You, you know, for one of these, especially if the, the heaviest load, you know, we're going into winter, we're going into holiday season. So while we don't want to discount in person, the sense is it's very much going to be virtual. And, and I think some of it is, is going to be fluid. You know, if we get through a first cut and we realize, wow, some really issues have come up that we want to further explore, that also affords us the opportunity to go back to the well for additional input.
Well, get the drone up and get some footage of the whole site while you, while, while it's still nice out.
Yeah, that's a good idea, I didn't even think of that. So I, again, this is why we thought, you know, tonight was a good to chat with everyone to get their input, so we didn't even think about that.
But I do, I do think it'd be, I, I don't think it'd be unreasonable to expect that we do, we meet twice a month at, at either the first, just on a regular basis, whether it's every meeting or every other meeting. A quick update from, from you or whoever, from Laura, whoever's really on, on, on point for the work that's going on. Just again, to keep it, keep it visible, keep it high-profile, what the progress is like, what you're learning. There may be some interesting ahas that come out, you know, early on, it's be good to hear about.
We, we definitely can commit to that.
Okay. Good.
Now, I, I just, I want to applaud the doing a video, a little bit of history, and I think the drone idea is great, especially if it's, you know, inside the property, sort of looking out, that drone scale is wonderful. But I just wanted to put in a third pitch for that, the scaled representative imagery. And just to make sure that I'm, you know, being fairly clear, that the, the idea is that you, you put down an either, you know, an axonometric or, you know, plan form, this is how big our property is. And this is how big, let's say, you know, downtown Kentland sits in the middle of it. This is how big Rio would look if it were sitting on top of it. This is how big Pike and Rose would be if you sat on top of it. This is how big Rockville Town Center is if it sits on top of it.
We did that in both the Old Town Plan and the Kentlands Commercial District Master Plan, so I know exactly what you're.
Yeah, and I think it was, it was really, really valuable then to sort of cut through the, you know, and I'll quote Heather Arnold, you know, the world, world's most famous market analyst, by saying, you know, when you, if you just ask her what she wants, she wants an Ann Taylor in her basement, right? But she only gives them a hundred bucks a month, she can't support them. So what you really need to do is come up with good data and scale that data so you understand the, the, well, the scale of what you're talking about. So it's, it's a great, great tool.
No, I think it is, and again, this is, you know, an emphasis why we wanted to put out the Cura study. So people, you know, don't go, I want an Ann Taylor, when you go, that's never going to happen here. You know, again, you know, look at the county market retail study, you know, we're over-retail. You know, so it's all, all of these, so we want to be able to get those aspirational elements, but temper it with, we've got to work towards long-term stability that's going to meet our needs going forward.
Good. Is that the kind of discussion you were looking for tonight?
Yeah, again, I just wanted to, anything else? I mean, I know we're approaching nine, but again, if anybody, you know, wants to talk about, you know, master plan process, again, just to be clear, you know, we wanted to get out in front of you, make sure everybody understood, you know, the direction we received from council, what we're moving forward with, what we're not moving forward with, what our ideas are to get this ball rolling. And again, we're always available, so you know, don't feel, you know, go, as, if something strikes, that you, you can't email any of the three of us, you know, and don't feel you have to go through Greg in order to get it to me. Feel free to call me directly, you know, email me directly, or Laura, or Kirk. As you go through, you know, I'm happy to hear Commissioner Hopkins read, you know, the actual study. You know, if you go through that and something jumps out at you and you wish to explore it more, get a better understanding, you know, we're, we're happy to do that also. And that's really the goal. So again, I appreciate, I appreciate the commission adding this additional meeting in August. But I appreciate them, you know, allowing us to hold this meeting, even though Matt and had rescinded their application so we could, uh, get this thing out of the way.
Good. All right, any other comments tonight from any of the commissioners? Thanks, Rob and Laura and Kirk, Greg for getting this rolling. It's going to get more complicated, I know, but good start.
No, I appreciate it, thank you.
All right. So there's no more comments on that, we'll move to our final item, which is from the commission and from staff. I just kind of go across the, across the top here. Sharon, anything tonight?
No, nothing, thank you.
Lloyd?
Nothing.
Phil?
Nope.
Matt?
Nothing from me.
Okay, and I don't have anything. That takes us to from staff, so I don't know, Greg, John, who wants to jump in?
I will just remind the commission that our next planning commission meeting is September second.
Absolutely, September already, wow.
Yep.
End of summer.
That's all I have tonight.
Okay, John, anything tonight?
Sure, I'll be really quick. Usually I update you on Lake Forest Mall, but I think you got Lake Forest Mall tonight. On seven hundred North Frederick, which was originally the topic of this meeting, I just wanted to let you know that the letter I received withdrawing the application for the proposed new sketch plan made the assertion that they are, they intend to file an S D P in compliance with the approved sketch plan that was approved last August, which we're actually kind of excited about. So, and then just to let you know that our new city manager, Tanisha Brierley, starts on September fourteenth.
Great.
And that's all I have tonight.
Please, please invite her to, I, I know she's going to have just a long list of stuff to deal with, and it's going to be probably a while, but if she finds five minutes on a Wednesday night that we're meeting to, to stop in and say hello, we, we sure appreciate that. So please, please extend that invitation.
I will absolutely do that.
Thanks. Well, great, is there anything else from the Brady Bunch panel that's up here on my screen? All right, if not, have a, have a great evening and the rest of August and see you in September. We're adjourned, have a good night.